Now I'll call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for this evening, Tuesday, February the ninth, 2021. It is 6:03 PM. Ms. Argus, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Ginger Cardwell.
Here.
Paul Hickey.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Dick Jackson.
Here.
We have the floor.
Thank you. Will you please stand if you're able and join me in a word of prayer led by Councilman Lowe?
Good morning, Father. Thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you for our wonderful city, our nation, that we can come and assemble in freedom. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for our police, our fire, all the veterans that have paid the ultimate price. Bless our city, our state, and our nation. And dear heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us and forgive us of all our sins, if you just name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
State flag.
Honorable Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Did you see it? That takes us to item D, presentations. I understand that that's not going to happen tonight, correct?
He was unable to attend at last minute.
All right. That takes us to item E, community interest. For this section of the agenda shall allow any member of the city council, the mayor, or the city manager, the opportunity to discuss minor, non-actionable items such as recognitions, scheduling, and upcoming civic events that are not listed on this agenda and which require no action by the council. Are there any community interest items to discuss or share? Oh, I keep forgetting they're up there.
So Mayor and Council, Chief Robison has been working on a campaign to provide the signs that you see on your screen right here to our citizens. And hopefully, probably next week, we will have those signs available for anybody that wants to pick one up here at City Hall, so that we can pick them out, hopefully do a little bit of public awareness on speeding on our residential streets. And in addition to that, we have, I believe, three council members and myself registered to attend East Texas Coalition Day at the end of this month with the Tyler Chamber of Commerce. And then tomorrow starts our first in a series of small business seminars through the Small Business Development Center. We'll post those here in the council chambers once a month. So we're very excited. We have about, I think, six individuals signed up for tomorrow's seminar. First one will be on how to start a small business. We're very excited about those items.
Also, the Chamber of Commerce will be giving their, our annual awards tomorrow. So keep an eye on the Chamber Facebook, and more to come there. They're throughout the day. There are going to be videos this year. There's not going to be an annual big gathering.
Anything else to share? I do want to say the way that they came together for those slowdown signs, and I was really happy to see that's a great opportunity for people that are interested in being engaged in the community, taking action by putting the signs in their yards, and then it has the White House logo on it. So it shows that the city has taken action to help engage those citizens. So, yeah, congratulations and thank you to the people that came up with that idea. It was a really good one. All right, on to... Sorry, need to scroll down a little bit. Public forum. And no one signed up for public forum today, so I will not be reading all of that. That takes us down to item G, which is the consent agenda. So this section shall provide for items that require no action by the council where no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmative majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. There's also the option for a council person to remove an item from the consent agenda to move it on to the agenda. So if no one would like to move one or more of the items onto the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Say. I have a first and a second. Will there be any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, so that takes us to item H, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, public hearings, on to item one, consider approval of fiscal year end 2019 audit by Gullup, Morgan, and Petty. Council, you'll find a staff report document on this as an attachment to your agenda. Is there anything you'd like to add to this report, Mrs. Black?
So Mayor and Council, one correction, this is the fiscal year end 2020 audit. And Governor Cashin from Gullup, Morgan, and Petty is here to present the findings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you allowing me to be here tonight. We're going to cover this pretty quickly. I was out here last week, spent a great deal of time with Jennifer and Leslie going through this in detail. You had a very good year of this year's meeting. You had an opportunity to look through everything. I'm sure you saw a lot of signs of that. I do want to hit on some of the hot points, some things I think will be of interest to you. A lot of this information should be being given on a monthly basis if you look through, as you look through your financial information. So I don't think there's going to be anything that's a surprise to you tonight. Before I get started with this, I do want to thank Leslie, Susan, Jennifer, the whole staff that you have up here for their hard work in helping us put this together. We appreciate them a great deal. Pages one and two, and I think some of you, you've got part copies in front of you. Some of you may be looking on on your tablets or papers, and that's fine. I'll try to give you some time to move around. If I jump a little bit, just bear with me. Pages one and two, this is really the most important reason we're here tonight. That is our opinion on your financial statements. This is an unmodified opinion. It is a clean opinion. This is the past opinion we can render on the financial statements for the city. It's the same opinion that we have rendered every year we have been associated. So if you're going to the NDNA document, we'll spend a good bit of time there. That begins on page three. I want to focus on a couple of tables that are on page five. So you'll get there, but you'll see there's two tables there. One, at the top is a statement in that position, and then below, there's a statement of changes in that position. Now, what this does, this gives, this is really your NDNA document. It's the only place you're going to see comparative information. So you're going to see comparative information with fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 19. And when you get into the body of the report, you're primarily going to be looking at just the one fiscal year for your ending September 30, 2020. So on your, on your, the top table there on the, on the, the statement in that position, this is broken down between governmental activities and business type activities. I'm sure some of y'all are a little new to government reporting, so I'll kind of give you the short version of this. And your governmental activities is primarily your general fund, and some of your other capital projects funds, which we'll look at here in a minute, which basically deal with things related to the construction of governmental type assets. The bulk of that is mainly improvements you've done with your streets and your drainage over the last few years. The business type activities is pretty straightforward. That's your water and sewer elevations. And basically, the way they're presented here, when they're presented in this means these are all full accruals. So just kind of keep that in mind as we go through this. Now, on the governmental activities, you'll see your current other assets increased about $700,000 between the end of 19 into 20. The big changes there were your general fund cash account went up $664,000. And we've seen a steady rise over the last few years in that. That's, that's very good. We have two other capital projects funds that are inside that governmental activities caption. You have a 2018 stormwater fund and a 2018 street construction. Those cash accounts between the two dropped about $827,000, primarily, we'll look at it in a minute, because you're doing some projects in those funds. Now, you also had a grant receivable that we recorded as a result. This was related to the COVID-19 relief fund. The money you got through that, and basically what this was, you incurred some costs related to primarily salary costs in the police department. You were able to get some reimbursement under the COVID relief act, and we accrued some of those costs. That was $396,000 that we accrued in 2019, and you received that money in October of 2020. Your capital assets, you'll see on the governmental activity side, those went up, went down, actually. Excuse me, went up $378,000. If you look over on the capital assets for your business top side, they decreased a little bit. So I'm going to ask you if you'll flip into your report and go back to page 32. I'm going to point out, we're going to, we're going to flip back and forth a little bit here, so just bear with me. Page 32 kind of gives you a, it's basically like a walk forward on your capital assets on the governmental side and the business top side. And if you look under your governmental activities, you'll see we added $776,000 related to capital, capital projects during the year. And that was related to streets and, streets and drainage projects that you had going on. That goes back to the cash decrease that we looked at just a minute ago. Depreciation on those assets was $541,000. So you can see down there in the middle of that page on 32, your net governmental activities capital assets went from 13.2 million to about 13.564. Now, if you jump, again, staying on that page, look at your business type activities. Now, you'll see the water and sewer system, you had increases there of $470,000. That was an improvement you did at your wastewater treatment plant during the fiscal year. So if you look at the total additions and look at the depreciation, you'll see there was a net drop there of about $127,000 when you take into account depreciation on those assets. Okay, so let's go back to page five. The next thing I want to address your attention to is the non-current liabilities between the two fund types. You'll see on the governmental activities, that went from 6.990 million to 5.879. That's about a $1.1 million drop. And then if you look over on the business top side, they went from the total non-current liabilities went from 10.7 to a little over $10 million. So again, if you'll bear with me, go back into the footnotes to page 36. And if you look at the middle of page 36, you'll see the table there that shows your activity on your long-term debt, okay, your long-term liabilities, which includes your bonds, your notes, and also includes your liabilities associated with your pension with your pension funds, okay, related to that with TMRS, and also your other post-deployment benefits that you have to record as well. So you can see there on the governmental activities, you see you paid $655,000 of general obligation bonds. We amortized the premium associated with one of those bonds, $15,000. You paid down on notes, $86,000. And then you had a decrease, an overall decrease between the governmental and the business top side. You had a, had a decrease of about $470,000 on your pension liability, which was good. Now, again, that's all generated through actual reports, okay, that come through that. So then on the, on the business top side, you'll see your revenue bonds, the $635,000, so that's your 2020 certificates that you borrowed early in the fiscal year, and then you paid 1.186 million towards bonded debt on the business type activity side. So let's go back to the end of page five and just look at the next, the next part of the, the next table there that shows the change in that position. We'll start at the bottom and then we'll kind of work our way up. So if you go down towards the bottom of page five, you'll see on the governmental activity side, we had an overall increase in that position of 1.752 million compared to 951,000 the year before. Now, that's an $800,000 increase from the previous year, which again, very good increase. Now, where, where does it, where does it come from? If you look at your revenues, your revenues went up by $822,000. Now, part of that increase is you'll see those grant revenues of 562,000. Now, understand, anytime usually you see grant revenues in a report, there's an expense offset. So there's 562,000 there, but there's $562,000 of a cost on the other end. So that really doesn't account for a whole lot of your change. Your big changes come from, of course, your property taxes went up, you had a healthy increase in your sales tax, which is really good, especially during the COVID year. So overall, that $822,000 increase mostly consisted of that. And then our, our expenses dropped, they're pretty flat. They dropped about $15,000. So again, healthy increase there from the previous year. On the business top side, you'll see for the most part, we were fairly flat. You'll see the previous year, we had an increase of $726,000, and then for 2020, we had an increase of $750,000. So not, not a great deal of change there. We had, you know, additional charges for services, the water and sewer sales to our customers, but then we also had a little bit of increase in our costs as well. Any questions on those two things before we jump to something different? I'm going to bring you to page 14. This gives you a budget actual schedule for your general fund, which is, which is a big source of where your revenues expanded, your operations run. And just want to point out some of the change, significant changes here. You'll see your total revenues, your final budget number was 3.835 million. Our actual revenues were 4.325, so we were $490,000 favorable compared to what our budget was. The big changes there, of course, property taxes, which we expected an increase there based off what we just saw, and of course, our sales taxes, the regular tax and our house sales tax that y'all passed years ago. So overall, those increases are about $200,000. License and permits, we're continuing to see go up because of the, the construction going on within the city. Hopefully, that, and I think that you'll see, continue to see that progress in the next two to three years. Total expenditures, our final budget was 4.074 million. Our actual expenditures were 3.995. So again, we're favorable there. We didn't spend everything we set aside for a budget, $79,000. So when you track it all the way down, we had initially, our initial budget was we would increase our fund balance by 126,000. We actually increased it on a budget basis, 663,000. When you take into account some of the accrual changes, because of the 300, like the 396 we mentioned on the grants, when you take all that into account, our fund balance actually increased just over a million dollars. So if you look at the previous year fund balance, we doubled basically our fund balance in one year. So that, that's an extremely, extremely good year. And everything, like I said, everything, we had a great discussion last week. Everything's trending in the right way with your finances. I do want to just show you one other thing, because I think it's important. We're going to go back to the very back. Schedule 14. Mine's not numbered, so you might have to help me. You got a number on Jennifer.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Thank you. This is something I always like to bring in front of the council over here, because I think it's, you know, it's good for you to see, because this is the one place you can take a look at and look and see, this is kind of a walk forward of all your bonded debt and your notes, right, that you still have incurred. It gives you a balance at 93020, but it also gives you what you will incur in fiscal year 21. Okay? And then it also shows you the additional note or bond interest that will be reported in future years, not principal, just interest. So that's the interest cost you'll incur related to those, to those bonds and notes. So that gives you a good idea of the detail of that. For those of you, I mean, most everybody's fairly new to council. I've been around a long time. This has shrunk considerably from some of the days we had, had this discussion, had these meetings. So things are trending in the right way. And then you can see there, we did pay off some things during the previous, during this past fiscal year. We actually pay off our 2013 tax notes. And if you look there, you'll see that there are several of these bonds that should be going away here pretty quick in the next few years to come. So anyway, council, that's all I wanted to share with you tonight. I'll open it up to questions that anyone may have.
I appreciate your hard work and we're here in this, and I think it's a testimony to what staff has continued to push for. Anytime we have revenues increase, but also expenditures decreasing in a year of unknown, I chalk that up to a win.
For sure.
Yep. Very good year, just with everything that went on in fiscal year 20 was an excellent year. They'd be very proud of what you found. You've got a lot of great things going on, and I know y'all are aware of it. So, anything you want to add?
One thing?
Leslie?
A couple of things, Mayor and Council. So while we increased our fund balance and nearly doubled our fund balance, and that gets us right in line with where we should be for reserves according to Gatsby and keeping our, our fund balance at a healthy level in the general fund. So while this is an extremely great year and we made a ton of progress, it doesn't mean that we have...
You'll get the rest.
It doesn't mean that we have a lot of money to spend. So it was a great year by our staff, keeping costs low. As you all know, when we've discussed, they gone above and beyond to keep our expenses flat and to make sure that we had such a great year. And the other thing, when Mr. Cashin showed that our bond indebtedness, Jennifer did reach out to our financial advisors to see if any of those were callable and refundable to lower the interest rate without extending our term, and we did not have any options for that. I did want to let you know that we did.
We did look into that, just because, you know, with the rates where they are, and we are still carrying some bonds that are all between four and four and a half percent, and a lot of things are going to be like one, one and a half. So I told them, check in, check in today to see if there's a possibility. Unfortunately, we can't. So we did look into it. So, okay? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cashin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great effort.
Hi, Jennifer. Working with the auditors on this preparation put together.
Well, thank you, Leslie, for the right here. Yep, you're largely responsible.
Our group effort, so we have an amazing team.
Yeah, it's great. It's great work. So will there be any further discussion, questions, comments on this topic? All right, this looks like something that we need to approve. So if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, go ahead and approve fiscal year end 2020 audit.
A motion on the floor, or a second?
A second.
I think Ginger beat him barely. First by Paul, second by Ginger. All right, will there be any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Congratulations again. Thank you again, Mr. Cashin. That takes us to item H2, discuss, consider, provide staff direction, and act upon pedestrian safety improvements throughout the city. Once again, council, you'll find a staff support document as an attachment to the agenda. The report contains background information and staff recommendations. Anything you'd like to add to this, Mrs. Black?
So Mayor and Council, at the last team, and Councilmember Lowe had asked that we talk about pedestrian safety and along active that specifically, but as noted in my staff, I attended a webinar with Text Dot about their transportation alternatives program in the upcoming grant cycle. And one of the options is to do what's now called transportation alternatives. It used to be called safe routes to schools, but allows for some federal funding potentially. And the current grant cycle would be for fiscal years 23, 24, potentially. And federal legislation hasn't even been enacted to allow for that program yet, but the grant cycle would close on March 1st. And that grant funding is particularly heavy on the administrative burden side during the application process. I know some of you are familiar and have been on the council, and that was talked about, you pursued in the past. And specifically, I think the concern, the immediate concern is along East Accretap coming out of the high school of Tabassum Road. And so we could certainly look at that. I'm going to have one of our engineers cost out that project. My recommendation would be, though, that given the likely relatively low cost for that project, that we look to find a way to fund that and through existing funding sources. I don't know that it's going to justify the amount of work delay and administrative burden that it's going to take to fund that during a transportation alternatives program. And so I'd like to do a little bit more research and get a cost estimate for that project before we decide to pursue that. And but I do know there are some other areas that may have concerns with pedestrian safety, particularly the intersection of Accretap and 110, and even maybe a continuation of Accretap. So I wanted to bring that before the council to get your input. Mayor Wonsley and I did discuss it, and I think he had some ideas for maybe a citizens committee to review these areas along with any others that may be in the community.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so if I'm hearing that right, that means if we were awarded that grant, the construction wouldn't even start until 2023?
At the earliest.
So that's with all, if all the ifs come together and land in our favor. So, yeah, I am interested in seeing the cost of that. And I think it winds up normally being $93 a foot or something. I read that on websites. I don't hold me to that. But it'd be great to see if that's a cost that we could enter a public-private partnership with people in the community that could help maybe fund some of the materials, some of the labor to go into that and help us fill that need, seeing how it is something that's, it's one of the few areas that's an exit from a school that doesn't have a way to facilitate traffic. And you have high school kids leaving out of there that were raised in White House, so they're not walking across other people's yards. You know, they were raised better than that. So you see them, you see them in the street. And I know because I lived there, I live on Accretap, so I would be giving up some of my yard if it falls on the south side, and I would, it'd be pretty easy to make that decision based on what's at stake. Yeah, so it sounds like at this point, we need a motion to be put forward.
Do you want to talk a little bit about a committee perhaps?
Yeah.
What the parameters might be?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a good outcome of the committee would be to explore the pedestrian needs throughout the city. I know that we have some needs that's come up. Councilman Lowe forwarded some communications that he received from some individuals about the crosswalk at the corner of Highway 110 and Accretap. That's a high-traffic area. There's not a crosswalk there. My understanding is not a crosswalk there because there's nothing that feeds pedestrian traffic that direction. There's no bike lane. There's no sidewalk. So, you know, you wouldn't expect to see a crosswalk where pedestrian traffic's not facilitated. So understanding what we would need to have in place at that intersection in order to get Text Dot on board with helping us put a crosswalk there would be good, and helping identify other areas in the city that maybe we're not aware of that faces some of the same issues that we face on Accretap and East Accretap. I would suspect there might be something along those lines going on anywhere that there's an elementary school, Canyon over on that side hallway, maybe even...
Well, and I agree. I think Hagan is something to look at, because originally, the, the sidewalk that started it came north. I think the plan was for it to continue north, but also to possibly head east on Hagan was talked about at one point. But then you also have, you would have memory in some other of those roads that tie into the middle schools and so forth. So I, I think, I don't know as far as your committee, what would be most feasible if we look at both sides of the road or start with one side of the road, hit our main pedestrian traffic areas, and then expand from that. I don't know if we would, you know, like you said, I don't even know what cost would be, but are we looking at voluntary land that would be acquired for the right of way, obviously? So there's several questions I think that would have to be raised by that committee to look into.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to, to have it mapped out. That way, we have it geographically. We know where those, those main arteries of interest are. And like you said, it would probably be different for each one of those communities about as far as the easement, you know, onto the property. So to just know all the variables in play, to know how far away we are from solving the problem, and then identifying the different pieces of the problem that we could solve incrementally, prioritize based on, you know, how much they would improve pedestrian safety and walkability of the city. I think it's a, it's a great effort to put forward, not only for safety, but for walkability, to have a city that gets out, that walks around, that's, that's engaged. And cities that walk and bike, they slow down. And cities that walk and bike, they slow down. And people engage each other more, they have an opportunity to, to go to the stores, to visit, to ride up at a restaurant or something. A city that slows down is a, just a better, a better experience, in my opinion. So that would be, my recommendation is to direct the city manager to, not only that, to form that committee, but I think one of the recommendations in the report was to add sidewalk improvements along East Accretap from the White House ISD property to Bascom Road to the capital improvements program for consideration for the upcoming budget discussion. And as the staff recommends, I think a committee that was, that's head by the city manager, and we can definitely throw some names out there for some people that want to be a part of this committee and that want to help pitch in to help solve this problem.
I certainly will volunteer to be on a committee in any aspect y'all need me for. Now, in regards to 110 and East Accretap, the crosswalk, we could, we could proceed with that, right? I mean.
So we have sent that request on to Texas dot for their review.
Good.
And their main concern was that there are no sidewalks currently along Accretap to feed into that crosswalk. And so there are a couple of issues with getting sidewalks along Accretap, mainly being right-of-way or easement opportunities, along with we still have to cross a railroad track. We all know it's not active, however, Union Pacific doesn't necessarily see it the same way we do. And so one of the things that the mayor and I were discussing was that we need to find out how much sidewalk would meet their criteria for putting in a crosswalk right there. But we have sent it to him, it is under review with Texas dot currently.
And just, I mean, just to add to that, a lot of people say, we just throw a sidewalk down. We looked at one heading 110 north from Hagan to continue what was already there. The state turned us down on the safe routes to schools grant because of the right-of-way acquisition, that the property was, there was not enough to put an ADA compliant sidewalk in. So I mean, those are some factors that you have to take into account also.
I think these are great steps forward, and I, and I also agree that it's worth moving forward and getting a cost estimate and not prolonging it three to four years. I also like having a committee involved, and I think it would be important to make sure that that's a good diverse committee of individuals that represent, you know, off factions of the community, so.
100% agree. I think committee's great to prioritize it. I know obviously Accretap needs a lot of work or, you know, work in that aspect, but the committee can help us prioritize it, and it's a great idea.
Mayor Council, I want to know if that will help. So these funding opportunities come along every odd numbered year. And so if we start that committee now, I think we're in much better shape two years from now when the same opportunity or a similar opportunity comes up, that we have a list of prioritized projects perhaps, that maybe we can make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck and pursue these opportunities in a very well-thought-out, well-prepared way.
My only question would be how this will coincide with our, our master plan and the timing of all of that, so that, you know, we're not spinning our wheels and then.
So talking to our grant consultant yesterday, and as you all know, the EDA has not, they weren't too favorable upon our initial submittal for the comprehensive plan. I did inform our grant advisor that if he becomes aware of anything, that would help move the Parks and Trails master plan piece forward ahead of the comprehensive plan to keep that in mind, just because I feel like we have so much more momentum on the Parks and Trails piece right now, and it may be a smaller piece that we can go ahead and buy off. And I think this committee, if we get to a point where we can move forward with that Parks and Trails master plan, I think this committee certainly has an opportunity just to feed right into that process. And it would be an integral, integral piece to that if we were able to move forward on it and that project were to be funded. So I think those two can coincide. I think any work that is done by the committee ahead of that process is all the better. And I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think they can fit in any way that the council sees appropriate.
Okay. Perfect.
Are you needing a motion or?
So Mayor Council, my recommended motion would be that you direct the city manager to form a walkable community committee to look at pedestrian needs throughout the city, determine any easements associated with this project's costs and opportunities, and prioritize solutions. And then the second recommendation that I would have would be to add any sidewalk improvements to East Accretap for consideration as in addition to the capital improvements plan for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget discussion. And to make it easy, you can just move, to make that motion as presented.
I move to make, I move to approve the motion as presented.
I'll second.
Of course, because it's going to make her minutes really hard. So Ginger was the motion, Zach was the second, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right. So that takes us down to item H3, COVID-19 updates. Mrs. Black, do you want to report to council from your end?
So Mayor Council, we've had a whole lot of news since the last time we talked. And the state continues to receive more and more vaccines. I have seen that through some federal government orders, they are shipping vaccines directly to pharmaceutical providers and medical providers. That's a change from the last conference call that we had and with the state. Originally, the state was only sending vaccines to hub site locations, but I think they found out pretty quickly that wasn't reaching some of the more rural communities that didn't have easy access to a hub. So we are seeing more go directly to pharmacies and medical providers. And I looked today, and I believe pharmacies, some pharmacies and medical providers were only receiving about 100 vaccines, whereas the hubs are receiving about 1,800 vaccines a week. So I'm so recommending to any citizens that are interested in getting a vaccine, that they reach out to one of the three local hubs, there's Krista's in Longview, UT Tyler, and Tyler, and then Net Health is running a hub as well. Net Health is the only one that I've seen that is maintaining and running waiting lists. The other two appears you just have to sign up as slots become available. So any of our citizens that don't have access to the internet, I believe, can call 211, and they can get hub vaccine information. So I know that was probably a criticism early on, was that the most vulnerable population isn't necessarily the population that can get to the internet. So 211 is an option for those people. And certainly, if they want to reach out to anybody, we'll do our best to get them in touch with the right people. And we have seen that our trauma service area has come back out of that more restrictive lockdown, so we did have seven days below the 15% hospitalization. So that's great news. And we'll continue to monitor and give you any updates if needed.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on this topic from council? All right, that takes us to item I, executive session pursuant to chapter 551. I'm sorry, I don't know why, it's at the bottom of my page every time. I really don't mean to skip that one. Consider future agenda items. Are there any items for consideration for the next council meeting? Anything at all? All right, going once, going twice. All right, now we're officially on item I, executive session. Pursuant to chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene to executive sessions from time to time deemed necessary during the meeting. The city council may convene into executive session to discuss any or all of the following topics pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section 551.071, possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to section 551.072, personnel matters pursuant to section 551.074, economic development negotiations pursuant to section 551.087. We will be entering executive session on the topic of deliberation of financial incentives for the development of the corner of Highway 110 North and Accretap pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.087. The time is now 6:42, and we will now enter executive session. The time is now 6:42, and we will now enter executive session. The time is now 6:56, council has returned from executive session. We will now resume the regular council meeting, taking us to agenda item J. Reconvened into regular session and consider action items, ordinances, resolutions, or public hearings related to item one, financial incentives for the development of the corner of Highway 110 North and Accretap. Is there any action coming out of executive session?
No, there is none.
No, no action out of executive session. Okay, that takes us to item K, adjourned. Any further items to discuss? Hearing none, the time is now 6:57, this meeting is adjourned.